Thank you, everyone. For the break, we are back. We will jump right into RC 19 curriculum. I will turn it over to Mr. Tranberg.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by lobbying for a before lunch position next Saturday. But thank you very much for your support with curriculum. And this is not just about written curriculum. This is about the written, the plan, the talk, the assessed curriculum. So thank you for your ongoing investment in that. I will start with just mentioning our instructional support specialist. I believe at our Thursday meeting or the meeting before, Mr. Maroni, you had asked about our SRBI numbers. So over the past five years, especially in literacy, those numbers have creeped up a bit. This budget does not ask for those two and a half positions that we have in the grant this year. But I would anticipate that for FY 24, we're going to be at a place where there is going to be a need for additional staff for literacy, not necessarily going back up to the two and a half, because we're seeing a disproportionate need across schools, especially with the EL population. And that's relevant here because the literacy interventionist also support our EL students at the elementary schools. So we have a large pocket of our EL students at Token East right now, plus our SRBI numbers are up a little bit at Token East. So there's a high need there right now. And the way that we can navigate that next year with our 1.5 FTE currently at each building budgeted for this, it might not necessarily be 1.5 at each building. There's some flexibility to staff those buildings as we need to, which has been done in the past. And there has not been an increase in math. So that's, that's the status of literacy. With our restructure from last year, the next two lines represent our Director of Elementary Education and our Curriculum Coordinator. The account 21405, that represents the stipend for our EL Coordinator. We are, FY 20, I believe, was the first request for an initial 1.0 FTE to support EL, which is synonymous for us with our literacy interventionist. That year, we had 65 students. Last year, that request was not made when we have 58. And the request is not here this year, and we have 54. So we are seeing a bit of a decline, but similar to students with learning needs, the number doesn't necessarily correlate with the number of hours a student might need in support. So that's just something to keep in mind. As far as curriculum development, that is related to our curriculum writing. That line is flat, but I did want to just mention here the request for Edge of Planet 21, which we talked about, I believe, at a curriculum subcommittee meeting as well. And that is in RC 15. That's about $5,700 for that platform to support our curriculum and making some updates there. For consultant services, there is an increase from 23.4 to 93. That represents two different items. One is a continuation of using some DEI consultancy expertise, which I would anticipate would be $45,000 for next year and then decreasing for FY 24. And the other component of that is $48,000 for math consultancy. So we are still early in our math and focus implementation. The reason that there was not an ask for math and focus this year is we were actually still working on what we had paid math and focus during the COVID shutdown. So we did have all that math consultancy this year, but it just happened to be getting our, our services we had already paid for. Dues and memberships is up slightly, just reflecting that cost, the increase in those memberships for administration. Local travel is down a bit. Our EL instruction is also flat. Textbooks, the two pieces of note that reflect that increase are our renewal of our Western Civ subscription. So that is a $30,000 increase, but that is for six years. And the other notable increase there is our TC units of study. That is for our K2 reading units. That is necessary because there are some state requirements coming regarding alignment to research that was released about a year ago on the science of reading. And these units are more aligned to that. A slight increase in professional development based on the requests of all of the departments. And I will mention, thank you to our curriculum leadership across the district, elementary and secondary. They're tuned in if you have any content specific questions for them as we move through. But this largely represents their requests for their department as well as some district needs. And the resource materials, 23004, that is up largely because of headphones. I know that sounds strange, but since we've gone one-to-one with devices, we also need to be one-to-one with headphones. And the way that we mitigated that over the past couple of years was using those headphones that you might have bought in a pinch or experienced in a hotel when you go and work out, and they have the free ones. As you might guess, they don't work so well and they didn't last. So they almost felt like they were disposable. So we were spending almost as much and kept buying them. This would be a replacement cycle. So at the elementary level, over six years, we would just keep replacing them. So we would have one-to-one headphones to use with those devices. Other than that, the only other thing of note would be the standardized testing line. That is up quite a bit, and that just reflects a move of software from RC 15 to RC 19. That's related to testing. The reason for that move is largely the point of contact. So all of the contact and communication comes from my office. But with it going to RC 15, Jeff's office was the point of contact. So it just added an extra layer and sometimes confusion over problem solving. I'm glad to discuss any points.
Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. I will open it up to board questions. Mrs. McCammon.
You have two questions. Thank you, Chris. First thing I'd like to thank you for is the transparency on the list of things we're doing for professional development. I think it's really nice to see where those dollars are going. I would love to ask that we actually see some of the dollar breakdown, because then it helps also see what we're prioritizing. And I actually, relatedly, would love to see us do the same thing for some of the other professional development dollars in the budget. It would be nice to see that for special education, for example, so that we understand what that spend looks like. I think at the building level, it's typically a little bit different, right? So I don't know that it's so necessary there. But where we have large chunks of PD dollars, I think it's really helpful to see. I have another question, but I can wait.
Did you lose your turn to go?
No, no, I have another one, but I can wait for the next round.
All right, Jill, thank you. Mrs. Perrin.
Thanks, Chris. Curious more about the TC units of study, the K2. Can you just talk to what the new guidelines are and what the requirements are? And should we expect that that will extend to 3.5, or is it stop K2?
Right now, K2, and it's mostly because of phonology and phonemic awareness, which, when you think about the science of reading, that is what many people thought was the gap for many years with the TC units of study. So we have been, with our introduction of foundations integrity, we've certainly been addressing that. But these units more comprehensively do that and will just help everything line up more clearly. And I plan for our, I haven't talked to you about it yet, but I'm hoping for our January curriculum committee meeting that that might be the focus of.
That was going to be my next. I would just love to understand this more. And I'm really glad to see that the phonemic awareness is being discussed and enhanced, because I do think that was missing significantly.
And for this Tuesday coming up, the curriculum update is focused on, in different departments, what are our areas of focus right now, which ties not only to the rest of this year, but what we would be working on in FY 23. But I call it FY 22, because the summer still is FY 22.
So with this new, with these new TC units, well, foundations and everything else that we're doing to supplement, what has been, are those still necessary?
Yes, they'll still be necessary. Everything will just be more tightly aligned. There will be training for teachers. And as we work with the staff developers, who traditionally did not work with those aspects as much, there would be more opportunities to do that with staff development in real time and through modeling as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
Western Civ. So it's a major purchase. And I know for years, the board has kind of asked for a look at that program or where the curriculum is placed, because it's such a comprehensive subject that covers so much. And we haven't heard any changes to the program. So my only concern is, are there changes to the program? Because if we're going to invest $30,000 for the next six year, or you know, that that's going to be our curriculum or textbook for the next six years, are we making changes after the fact?
I would say that changes, if changes occur to the course, I think the textbook still aligns and would still be the primary resource. So I think there's room for the changes to happen without changing that resource.
Okay. And at some point, maybe an update on if that program's going to change, because it's been six years. It's a new six years. Thanks.
Thanks, Mrs. Akman. Mr. Maroni.
With that six-year, we can't, we can't allocate that over the six years of $5,000 per year? Or is it a one-time purchase? And then, so we won't see that for the next six years?
That's correct. So it's, it's a one-time purchase. You wouldn't see it for six years. I can ask Mr. Keeler to work with the vendor to also price out what would it look like for one year, or two years, or three years. They usually make it worth your while to do the six. This is the way it's designed, as you know, but I can certainly get that for you if you'd like.
Okay. Mrs. McCammon.
Chris, you talked about this, but I'd like to review it a little bit, our capacity in ELL. So you said we were 66 two years ago, then 50 some. What did you say those numbers were?
58 and then 54 this year.
58 and then 54. And right now, going into the upcoming year, our capacity would come from our literacy instruction.
That's correct.
And so what do we have in terms of capacity right now? What kind of swing could we handle? Ballpark.
So right now, the numbers, we have the staff that align with the numbers, the students that we have to service. And because we have those two interventionists this year, we're able to make it work. But when you look at Token East, just a good example, because I think the number is, might be 19. That's a very high number. That's a, that's a big pocket of EL learners that with the staffing for next year, we might want to think about maintaining 2.0 there within the staff that we have in order to continue that support. So that would be the way to make it work. But there's other schools. I think one of our elementaries has zero, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And so we want to make sure we're putting the resources where they're needed most.
And then from a district perspective, though, so that, that would be sort of moving between buildings. But from a district perspective, if we got an influx of, again, you know, we were talking about the fact that kindergarten is notoriously hard to predict. We've got a lot of, we've had a lot of immigration or a lot of house purchases, I should say, for sure. If there were a bolus of English language learners, how much do you think we could handle with the current budget?
With the current budget, I think we'd be pressed pretty quickly if there was an influx of a population that needed EL support. I'd also mention Katie Rusk, who is now our Curriculum Coordinator, was a former interventionist. She was also a certified EL teacher. So the person who was very highly qualified to work directly with those students is now someone who we have who can provide the training and the PD for the staff to do that. So that's something else that we have as an advantage right now.
Okay, okay. This is kind of like special ed. It's not something we can predict, but I hope that we'll keep this conversation going and that if things change, that, that we would, you know, we've notified the board quickly.
Absolutely. And Patricia Thalassinos is our coordinator, who's at the high school, who is the most attentive, diligent and thorough person in making sure I'm aware of students in and out and any changes with legislation. So I will definitely keep you appraised.
Thank you.
Mrs. Worm.
Yes, hi, thank you. So I just have a question about the consultant services at the DEI portion. I mean, I know that we're currently still talking about doing the transfer to continue with the DEI consultant this year. So now this is an addition next year as well, having the DEI consultant. I'm just wondering, is this for the full year? Is this, are we going to see this come up again? Is there an end date or what we're looking at here?
For next year, it's, the budget is based on six onsite days for a consultant and six virtual days. And I would assume that the following year, because the design of this and going with a consultant over a program, as I've stated, is to build the capacity of the staff that we have here to do the work and to continue to do the work. The way that these models work is you need less consultancy over time, because you've built up the capacity of the staff to do the work. So I would imagine that going down for FY 24 and possibly not be needed past FY 24, if we can continue to make good progress.
Mr. Seeny.
Just to follow up, can you give us a little more detail in the future? Like, you've done with the textbooks, the DI, is it just one consultant? And then you talk about math instruction. Are there a number of different consultant uses? Or are we just talking about two?
It's just two.
Oh, it is? Okay.
With math and focus, the consultant we work with is through Math and Focus, which is our provider of the resource.
Okay.
And Nicole Bridge is the person we've worked with for years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Any other board questions around curriculum? Let me just look on the screen here. Tara, Worm, do you have your hand up again? Okay, thank you. I can't see Mr. Brown. I see him. He looks like he's good.
All good.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Akman.
Lucien, can you talk a little bit about what we need on the math consultancy?
So we, having, having really missed out on an entire year of that consultancy, I still think we're pretty young in our implementation of the program itself. And we haven't had the benefit of as much in-person coaching time for the grades that we're last to implement and the modeling, especially at fifth grade. And fifth grade math with programs like Math and Focus are much more complex than the way that math instruction has happened before. So I think that would still be a focus there.
And just a quick update. On our ELL, I think a few years ago, when Dr. De Silva was here, we saw a whole list of languages that, and some of them, interesting to know that we had kids who spoke some African languages, some that we provide services for. So just to be clear, we have 54 students that are ELL learners here in Darien. So the idea that someone who spoke Spanish isn't all that foreign or crazy to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Mr. Seeny.
If this board does go forward with the transfer for DEI consultant in this fiscal year, did anything get moved out of this budget that we're talking about now forward or accelerated? Or, you know, if we didn't move forward, would that $45,000 go up? I guess is my question.
Don't think I'm understanding the question.
So we have a DEI consultant currently. We are, we will be in a future meeting discussing a transfer to increase his services. If we were not to do that, would this $45,000 be higher? Because you're, you're not moving some of his services into the current fiscal year. I feel like we're accelerating some things that would have happened anyway, but maybe if you can.
Ideally, yes, but I'd be able to make it work with the amount that is requested.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. Akman.
Local travel. Tell me a little more. I know it's down. I like seeing it down. I ask about this every year, but you know, how expensive is it for our itinerant staff to travel between our schools?
I'll turn it to Mr. Riddle for this one, because I'm sure that's based on how we've used that account.
So it's about 58 cents a mile that they get reimbursed, which is the IRS mileage rate. We reduced it by 2,500, because there just hasn't been as much itinerary travel in the last few years, and we're expecting it to stay within that range.
Okay. And are we seeing any increase in itinerant travel either this year or expected for next due to COVID? Like providers having to go into homes, and now we're paying for that?
I would anticipate that additional elementary FTE. Ideally, what it's doing is we have our itinerant staff traveling to less schools, and that would be a savings more than anything else.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. All right. More from the board. We'll move on to Board of Finance. Any questions with respect to curriculum RC 19?
Not for me, Duke.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Duke, can I just ask for some, just a little more detail on account 23005, Curriculum R and D, to find out what pilot programs are being considered?
Okay. Thank you, Taylor. RTMF and B, Jack?
Yeah, I have two comments, and maybe I'm just missing something here.
You, we lost you, Jack. Can you start again?
Sure, I have two comments. I was looking in the book. On the 191209, currently, we're saying that there's 13.5 staff, but we recognize that 2.5 staff are currently being paid by a grant. So either the 13.5 is an incorrect number, or we're increasing our staff by 2.5 to get it back to the pre-COVID. I'm not sure which of the two is there, but somehow, it doesn't look like the, not paying for these staff from grants is properly reflected in the budget book. I see it as that we're adding another 2.5 into the budget. On consultative services, it looks like there's a $40,000 increase. And I know that there's discussion for a transfer to cover those costs. I'm just curious why, if we have $40,000 elsewhere in the current budget to cover the cost to bring it up to 63, why that cost isn't reduced elsewhere in the budget to cover it for next year's? I mean, if we're doing a transfer out of something for this year, then those funds could very well be available for next year as well. So I'm just curious to reconcile that.
Thanks, Jack. Ed, RTM Education?
No questions.
Thanks, Ed.
Just a few questions. Does the new Principles of Engineering course need textbooks? There are none budgeted for this new class. On page 150, the consultant, Marilyn Friend, are there plans to implement co-taught at the elementary level? And Margie Gillis, what are the future plans for implementation of dyslexia screening program recently introduced in ELP? Are there plans to expand into K? We're asking this in this RC, because we're hoping screening would be for all students, not just those with IEPs. Page 153, professional development, how much are we spending on language-based literacy programs? How much are we spending on literacy-based outplacement? Unilateral placement? How much would it cost to train teachers in OG? Is the foundations program successful with gen ed students? And how many students are receiving SRBI? At what tier level? For how long? What is the staff caseload? And are SRBI instructors trained in how to identify and refer kids to special education? Thank you.
Good, good.
Can I just get a clarification? Laurie, one of the questions that you said, could you just clarify what you said about the, for literacy outplacement or language outplacement?
Um, so how much are we spending on language-based literacy programs? How much are we spending on literacy, literacy-based outplacement, unilateral placement? Like Winword or another? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
This is Sarah Brown. How long will the DEI audit take to complete once it begins? Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle will open it up to public comment on RC 19 curriculum.
Ms. Artori, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry my question didn't get in, but relating to account number 2412, it says that there's a shift in where the funds are housed, but also there appears to be an increase. Could you just kind of explain that a little better?
What's the number again, Clara?
It's the standardized testing, 24012. And it looks as though both there's been a transfer from RC 15 to RC 19, and also that the amount has increased. So is what I'm seeing a real increase, or is it about the transfer from RC 15 to RC 19?
Great, thank you, Clara.
Thank you.
Michelle, any additional public comment?
There are no more raised hands.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. We will move on to RC 23, summer school.
So RC 23 is assuming about 2,400 participants, similar to this previous summer. We are assuming, again, an in-person summer school. Caitlin and Mark do a great job at running the school summer session, and it is an overall credit to the budget of about $132,000.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. I will open it up for any board comment on summer school. Good. Let me just double check on our screen. We look good. I will open it up for any Board of Finance comment, RC 23, summer school.
Nothing, Duke.
Thank you, Rob. Taylor?
Nothing here.
Thank you. RTMF and B, Jack? We will move on to RTM Education. Ed?
No.
Thanks, Ed. CDSP, summer school. Thank you, Lori. CPAC, anything on summer school?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, any public on summer school?
Ms. Sarah Brown from CPAC, has her hand raised?
Great, Sarah.
No, I don't have a question, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
There are no more raised hands at this time?
Thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to RC 20, finance.
So as we talked about before, we are dealing with the Gatsby 84 pronouncement. The only real change in the finance budget is a $600 increase to contractual audit costs.
Sorry, Rich, could you repeat that? Dr. Adley was. He was doing his COVID thing.
So the only real change is a $600 increase to the cost of the audit, which is contractual.
Thank you. I'll open it up for board questions, RC 20, finance. All right, good.
We're just one quick one.
Sure, Mrs. Akman.
So, Rich, just to put a finer point on my earlier question where we started the day, would it be possible, given that the finance department had added staff last year, for them to pick up the extra work of the bursar at the high school? Or is that not feasible?
So a portion of the work is being picked up, as I mentioned earlier. We're going to take over the bank reconciliation and the processing of the actual checks. A portion of that work, which is like really posting the catalog items, interfacing with the athletic coaches, things like that, really has to be done at the high school.
Really what?
Really has to be done at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. All right, I will open up Board of Finance. Any questions on RC 20, finance?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Taylor?
None, thanks.
Thank you. RTMF and B, Jack?
None, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Ed, RTM Education?
No, thanks.
Thank you. CDSP? You are good. CPAC?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, open up RC 20 to the public, finance.
There are no raised hands at this time?
Thank you. We will move on to RC 16, administration.
Just a couple of line, just a couple of line items to address. The first being 12001. So we do, we do, you'll see again here that the, we have come back again with the suggestion based, actually even today, some of the discussions we have had to reinstate the demographer report. So that's, that's in there at the moment. And then it's $10,000 that I mentioned earlier for an open choice liaison person who would work with the students, the staff, the sending community, our, our community, just to be a voice, a point person for, not be a part-time position just during the actual school year, the 180 days would be part-time. Legal services, we just looked at the last 12 months of usage and made an adjustment to $160,000. And with negotiations next year, just planned accordingly for, for that. The only other one is just a slight increase of relaxes, that really has, just the board expenses, are the board expenses for this remote learning and what we're doing at the moment in terms of remote board meetings and so on.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll open up to board questions on RC 16 administration. Mrs. Best?
Thank you. On the liaison for open choice, is that a year-after-year expense, or is that a first year to get things rolling?
To get it up and running, yes, but it would probably stay. I would think, my experience has been something like that sort of stays.
Thank you. Mrs. Worm, you look like you have a hand up?
Yes, dues and memberships. Could we just get a breakdown so we know that, what it is for each one?
Sure, we have, within there, Tara, there's.
Can you get somewhere?
Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, so in there, there's these things like the CES, and there's others that, organizations that I belong to. So it's a combination between the district representation and alliance to these, these organizations and also to mine. So we can certainly break them down, you know.
That'd be great.
Break them down for you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Worm. Mrs. Akman?
Let's talk demographer. Go for it. Tell me. Go for it. Tell me more. Tell me why you need one every year.
We skipped one.
I know, and I'm happy we skipped one, but, because we skipped one, we didn't always have a demographer for years, but it seems as if this administration would like one year over here, so I'm just trying to understand the need.
Well, certainly right now, the variability that we're seeing, certainly the level of work that we need to do for, for people moving in and out is, that's, that's what obviously a demographer does. We're talking about open choice, we're, so we got quite a few variables on the table. I think you want to use the best and most latest information on these things.
So, I would just say the variable of people moving in and out. My thing is we have typically would bring in a demographer every couple of years and we've had an internal rate and we've used different models and we've been fairly close. I have advocated that I don't think we need to spend the money for one every single year. And so we did skip a year and so maybe we need one this year, but I, I'd like to understand, I don't see it as a yearly expense. And so I'd just like to understand if the administration is looking for someone to do this every single year. We used to have Malone and McBroom every third year. And our models ran pretty tight. We do have a lot of change in town, so maybe it's time to do it more frequently, but I think that's what's on the table. Do we look at a demographer every single year? Do we use our own internal models? Do we do every couple of years?
Well, ideally, yes, I would do it every year ideally, if the board didn't think there's a necessity for that. Even this year, we're, we're doing averages to project based on the last report that we had. But ideally, I would, but certainly for next year, definitely.
But you, from an administration standpoint, you would do it on an annual basis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is McCammon.
Whether or not we decide to do it on an annual basis, I feel strongly about doing it this year, where we left off with Malone and McBroom. They felt that we would get a better persistence model after the census data came in, which we should have this year. We're looking at open choice and we do have a lot of builds plus some, some new ones that are being discussed. So I would, happy to discuss what it means going forward, but I would really like to see it done this year.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Any other hand raised?
So could we, as we make this decision, and I'm sure we know it somewhere, but could we get it, like when the projects on town are looking to come online? That might help me help make a determination how I feel about it.
Yeah, and I've spoken with Dr. Adley and I've spoken with Rich about phone calls coming in, about signing up for school, about lease negotiations already going on with federal, which is moving along. So they are working with the town to get an update as to when those projects come more online, and that's why I do think it makes sense if we're going to do it, to do it this year. And if it, if it is Malone, Malone and McBroom, they've been part of it and they know some of the development that's going on, so they think that makes sense. Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Anyone else?
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. While you have a train of thought.
So as we're
Late in the day.
As we're looking at, I know, before I lose it.
All right, let's go.
Other board expenses, and it's, it's minimal, but we do have an increased expense to our meetings, doing it in this forum. It's still COVID. I'm all for this forum. I think as a board at some point we need to talk about is YouTube and Zoom are now current practice? And realize that there's an additional expense there. Every time we do do a special meeting, there's an incremental expense. I mean, they're tiny, but I just think we should start to at some point realize, is this a COVID model, but once we get back to operating without masks, is this our ongoing model?
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. All right, you good on board questions? Oh, sorry, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry, missed the button. So two things. One, I just would like to follow Miss McCammon and show my support for doing the demographers report this year, especially if we're going to be thinking about open choice and some of those numbers would be great to get that refreshed. And a comment that was just made about Zoom. And maybe this is better for Jeff earlier, but since we just mentioned, I'll throw it out there. I know that say, for instance, Microsoft Teams is free for schools to use. I don't know if we've ever looked at any alternatives to Zoom that might be more cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I will move on to Board of Finance. Any questions on RC 16, administration?
I'm Duke, thank you.
Thank you. Taylor, you good?
All set, thanks.
Thank you. Jack, RTMF and B?
We're good, thanks.
Thank you. Ed, RTM Education?
Yeah, I have one, someone had one question. Some of this may have been addressed, but who, who is the open choice liaison? How is this person selected and what does this consultant actually do?
Thank you. Yeah, Dr. Adley gave some earlier description of that. It is no person that's been chosen yet, so we'll get more descriptions on that.
Understood, no, and, and you know, a number of the committee members had sort of left the discussion, but like the question was here in our group and so I, I just, you know, it's, it's on the paper.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ed. CDSP? All set. CPAC?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle will open up to the public for any comments on administration RC 16.
There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. We will move along to RC 18, Personnel and Human Resources. I believe that goes to Marge.
Well, really, this budget of mine is not really my budget because most of it is determined budget control and, you know.
I've never heard that excuse before. Budget is really not my budget. I'm going to use that. I'm going to use that.
I wish I had control over it, but there are a couple of changes, the certified staff column changes. I think that the teacher's contract changed in the last iteration to open up some additional courses that are eligible for salary. It didn't drop last year because of COVID, but you know, I think you're seeing that now. And the increase for the teachers and residents, I believe is because they're not expecting a grant this year to defray some of the costs. And other than that, I defer to Rich on the rest.
Any updates, Rich, from you?
So in terms of turnover, we are budgeting 30 teachers, turning over from an MA 19 to an MA 15. This year we had 54, it's actually going up to 56. Teachers turnover, but of those 56, we really only saved materially on 30, so that's where we came up with the 30. There are two contracts that will be unsettled next year, which is the custodians and the maintenance, so you see that in contract support, which is why that number's up. Marge touched on it earlier, but we're anticipating 27 teachers eligible for a degree level change against 18 for the current year. And then the teacher and residents, there are still two in there and it's just the contractual increase and then the partnership fee, we're not expecting to be defrayed by a grant.
So, Rich, could I go? It's, I didn't do my usual and talk about it, but as I'm looking here under long-term substitutes, you all left substitutes flat throughout the whole budget. Can you give a quick update on that?
In terms of long-term substitutes, usually the fluctuation you see is when an employee is out on unpaid leave of absence and then we'll end up moving in the salary savings from that employee into long-term savings. You know, with the exception of some of the, you know, the most recent experience we've had, I'd say in the last week due to COVID, substitutes have been relatively flat this year. We've seen interns and building subs covering them. You will see in the next financial report, the new teacher MROU, which will likely increase substitutes a little bit, but we're not building that into the budget.
So forgive me, I go back to substitute teachers like 21302 under homes. So that line item you've left flat in all the elementary schools and all, okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, sure, Mrs. Ackman.
So we have our long-term subs at $475,000, but our experience, I mean, I guess we kind of, we were over that, but close to 1920, way over that in 1819, definitely over in 2021. We'll be over it this year by your estimate. So what was the thinking of having a decrease?
So part of the reason why we're, we've been over it this year and in the past again is we're paying long-term subs who are covering primarily teachers who are out on maternity leave, who are not getting paid, and then we're taking those savings and moving it into the long-term substitute account. It's really just an accounting adjustment. The 475 really represents the teachers you're paying, the substitutes you're paying while you're still paying the teacher who might be out on a medical leave of absence and they're being paid sick day, so you're kind of paying both simultaneously. If we look back historically, that number has really worked out relatively well, with some minor fluctuations, but you're usually always going to see money kind of go into that account as you take those salary savings from those who aren't being paid and then moving it to cover the cost of the sub who's covering for that teacher and.
So you think 475, it will be the delta between the savings on salary and the actual expense?
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Any other board questions on Personnel, Human Resources? Mrs. McCammon?
Comment, thank you for the historical detail on budget control. I think it's very helpful to maintain that through time, so I appreciate you adding it. I have a question about the teacher and residents. We talked about it last year, but the correct partnership fee. Do you think there's any opportunity to negotiate there or are those true administrative costs on their side?
Right, so we had gone back to them last year and asked them, they were holding firm on that amount, and maybe they'll get another grant this year and we'll get lucky. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Mrs. Best?
Thank you. I was going to say thank you for the budget control history also, but I was going to say that I might argue that in some cases we should have used more budget control in those years than we did, so while that reflects actuals, it may not reflect what some of us might have liked to have seen happen. My question is on account 11024, turnover regular. I was just curious, based on the current climate, if you changed any of the assumptions that you would usually use to put that, that line item together this year?
So we did not look at every teacher who left. We did see a significant increase in the amount of teachers who left, but like I said, I think we're about 56 now. Not all 56 yielded a savings, and I think Marge kind of has said in the past, we kind of just trade teachers back and forth with other districts. And when that happens, you don't actually see that material savings, which is why we lowered it to the 30.
Thank you.
Mrs. Parent?
I just want to be sure that we're doing all we can as a district to maintain the teachers that we have. Everything you read in here is that the pressure that the teacher is, is under.
We really do try, and I know that it's just a hard time to be a teacher, but we're always talking, especially a cabinet level, of ways to show our teachers appreciation, give them a break when we can, but it's just, and everyone's desperate for teachers, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent.
Can I, on the turnover, Rich? So this year was we, you didn't get the step differential that we've had in the past and you explained that. This 19 to 15, did you adjust that at all?
No, we left that the same. That's been, you know, on an average relatively close to what we saw in the 30 that we saved. What we really adjusted was the total count of turnover.
Okay, so this is, the 19 to 15 is not, it's pre-COVID, is that, is that basically the way I should look at it?
Even during COVID, I mean, it is an average, so sometimes we'll see somebody leave it at 19 and we replace them at a five. Sometimes we see somebody leave it at 19 and we replace them at 16 or 17, so it's really more of an average across the 30.
So you didn't see the average change that much this year? You just saw the numbers go. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman.
Ms. Cyan, as you do your exit interviews, how much of this is this turnover? Or is any of this turnover related to COVID? And what's behind my question there is would we expect significantly less turnover as hopefully we move to a less COVID intense environment?
So last spring, a lot of it was due to COVID and people either deciding to leave the profession or deciding that they were going to go to Westchester and make a lot more money if they were going to be teaching in COVID. Or they had literally the pick of positions all over the state. So somebody who was here but who could all of a sudden get paid a decent amount of money to be closer to home. So you know, this year, the people who have left mid-year have all had reasons. Not all of those were COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Any other questions? Personal Human Resources. Just look for Mr. Brown, Mrs. Worm. Okay, good. We will open it up to questions from Board of Finance, Personnel and Human Resources, RC 18.
I'm Duke, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. Taylor, anything?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Jack, RTMF and B?
Yeah, just one little comment. Marge, I understand this isn't necessarily your budget, but anything that's down 20%, I definitely take credit for.
Thanks, Jack. RTM Education, Ed?
No, thanks.
Thank you, Ed. CDSP, they are good. CPAC?
We're good.
Thank you. Michelle, any comments from the public on Personnel and Human Resources, RC 18?
There are no more raised hands.
Great, thank you. We will move on to our last RC, COVID, RC 28.
So we're not, we're not budgeting anything for COVID. We do show three years of historical actuals, so even if COVID goes away, we are stuck with this RC for at least three months.
Thank you, Rich. All right, I will open it up to any board questions on RC 28, COVID.
I really do have a question.
Sure.
I know it's a lot of zeros, but where do we see the overtime that our nurses are paid for contract tracing?
So for, for this year, it's in the ARP grant.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Looking for Ms. Worm, Ms. Brown now. Okay, good. I will move on to Board of Finance. Any questions on RC 28, COVID, which we are not budgeting anything for?
None, thanks.
Thank you.
Me neither. Thank you.
Taylor. Jack?
None, thanks.
Thank you. Ed?
No.
Thank you, Ed. CDSP? CPAC?
None, thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, any hands for the public?
No hands.
All right, we will move quickly to public comment. Michelle?
You want me to read the entire instructions or just watch out for hands?
Let's just watch out for hands. I think everyone understands the instructions. This will be, this is more specific to the three-minute rule.
There are no raised hands, Mr. Denny.
There are no raised hands for public comment. So a big thank you. We are a little bit ahead of schedule and we've had some really good conversations amongst the board and questions and also from our partners in the public. So a big thank you for spending a beautiful day after a snowstorm Saturday with us to kick off the budget process. We look forward to working with all of you in terms of our partners and the community to get all our questions answered. And we look forward to the whole budget process and the next scheduled meetings. So may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Mr. Maroni, second by Ms. Best, Mrs. Best, all in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you all.